Yeah, I've muted all mic.
So I've unmuted myself, okay.
Unmute yourself.
Ready to go? Okay. Well, welcome everybody to this first virtual meeting of the Farringdon Town Council. Let's hope it goes well. So I'm going to call out each councillor as an officer's name and ask them to unmute and answer, then re-mute yourself, okay? So first of all then, Kieran Bentley. Kieran.
I'm here, yeah.
Yeah, good. Jane Bolton.
Yeah, I'm here.
Rosalind.
Yes, I'm here, hello.
Hello, Peter.
Yeah, I'm here.
James.
Right.
Angela.
Yes, I'm here.
Steve. That's Steve Lannick.
I think Steve is struggling with his internet connection at the moment, but hopefully he'll join us shortly.
Okay, Kim. Kim? Good.
I'm here.
Hello. Stephen.
I'm here.
Liz.
Haven't heard from Liz, have we?
No. No, not yet then. Is that Liz?
Yeah.
Yeah, I've just, it takes a while on my machine. Sorry about that.
Fine, Bethia.
Yep, here I am.
Obviously I'm here. And then we've got officers, town clerk, yes. Deputy town clerk.
Yeah, I'm here.
And Joe.
Yeah, I'm here.
Excellent. Well, here we go. So we've got no apologies for absence. And we've got everybody present, excellent. Steve to come, okay. So item three then, minutes of the meeting of the 11th of March. Can we check those for accuracy, please? Have you all got them? Okay, page one. And page two. Now, if you've got any comments, can you unmute yourself and say that you don't like the minutes or you've got a problem? And if we haven't any comments, then we can go to a vote. Okay, have we had any comments, Sally?
No, we haven't.
Comments, no.
So everybody's happy? Nod your heads.
We can vote in the.
Yeah, so now we can vote, so we have to click on the show conversation. We should see a poly there which says we agree. The minutes can be signed as a correct record of the meeting held on the 11th of March 2020. We've got three boxes, agree, disagree, abstain, so you can submit your votes.
We have 100% agree, Mike.
There we are, so we've had our first vote and it's worked, excellent. Item four then, declarations of interest and requests for dispensations. I think I've got an expenses payment somewhere on the account, is that right, Sally?
I don't think you have today, Mike.
On this one?
Oh, you might have had a pre one, yes you have, yeah.
Yeah, that's right. Anybody else got a request for dispensation?
There is a declaration of interest from Steve Lannick on the Highworth Road application and from Kieran Bentley on the Highworth Road application as well.
Okay.
I was just declaring an interest generally in planning matters because I'm finding it difficult to separate the two roles at the moment because of the virtual nature of everything, so I am putting a blanket on planning.
Yeah, thank you, Bethy, I know it's difficult if you're a district councillor to do both jobs.
Even more so in these times, I can tell you, because it is very difficult virtually.
I know previous district councils have done exactly the same, declared an interest on planning applications. Okay, item five then, public question time, have we received any questions?
No.
Right. And has anybody, have we had any visitors to the meeting, Sally?
No.
Okay. So I'll I should say, I'll sign the minutes in as a true record and I'll do those and give them to Sally and she'll collect them from me. Right, so item six then. So Farringdon Town Council accounts, 1st of April 2019, 31st of March 2020. We've got four of those and the first is to receive and note the annual internal audit report. That needs a signature, which I'll do and the clerk will do as well. So that's section one, annual governance statement.
So we have to note the internal auditor first, Mike, which I've put up and then we go on to section one.
Yeah, so we note the annual internal audit report, is everybody happy with that?
Mike, we have a question from Angela Finn.
Yeah.
Hello, it's not really a question, it's just to say a big thank you to Sally for facilitating the internal audit, the good record.
Thank you, Angela.
Okay, so we note that, that needs signing, which I'll do in due course. And then B, to receive and approve the annual governance statement, section one. So can I propose to approve the annual general governance statement? I'll need a seconder. Thank you, thank you Angela. And can we vote on that one, please? So I'm getting behind myself, okay.
We need, yeah, 100%, that's good.
That's the annual governance statement, section one. Next will be item C, which is to receive and approve the accounting statements, section two. Can I propose that we accept those, please? Can I have a seconder? Thank you, Kiera.
I'm happy to, yeah.
Thank you, can we vote on that, please? Thank you. And next is to note the reconciliation figures. Can we note this? I haven't voted myself, okay. Right, I've just got one question, Sally, on the internal audit summary. Were two queries on there about councils should refer to attached internal audit observations? I mean, these are presumably just minor things, aren't they?
Yeah.
Okay. So everybody happy with section six? Yes, we'll move on. Item seven then, which is clerk's report and schedule of payments. We've got clerk's report for March and clerk's report for April. So can I propose that we approve those end of year payments? Do you want to do them separately, Sally? Can we do?
No, we can do them all together, Mike.
Okay. I've got an expense, so I've declared an interest in there, so can someone propose, please?
I'm happy to propose.
Thank you, Kiera, can I second Angela, thank you. Can those who can vote, please vote? Thank you very much. Right.
So that's carried.
Thank you, moving on then. Item eight, insurance. We've received three quotes, can we look at those, please? Everybody happy with Sally's recommendation on that? To go with the quote from WPS for a three-year period? So we need to vote on that, can I propose that we accept the WPS quote for a three-year term?
I've just got one query, Sally. If we suddenly after 18 months decide it's not a suitable policy, presumably there's a surrender fee if we need to get out of it and go with another organisation? Yes. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so everybody's happy with that then? Can we please vote on the, accepting the WPS quote for a three-year term?
Okay, Mike, that's carried.
Thank you very much. So that's the end of my stint for a while, so I hand over to Kiera, who's going to take item nine and items to do with your committee on premises.
Yeah, thank you, Mike. Welcome, everybody, it's all very weird, isn't it? So we'll do our best and thanks to the supporting team who are behind us trying to get everything fixed as well. So we're going to talk about the facilities committee items on your agenda number nine, the place relocation to receive and consider the plans. Have you all had sight of the proposals or the ideas that Sally sent around? Sally, do you want to just fill us in on a little bit of background for those that might have forgotten?
Yes, certainly, so we have spoken about this. We've drawn up some plans in conjunction with the staff at the place to knock all the officers into one big room that can be used for families to meet and then there will be a back office with a small kitchenette and they will also use the mayor's parlour for storage and for their clothes library.
It looks like that. Anybody's seen that? Okay, have we got any questions or queries about that? No? Marvelous. Nothing in the comments, nobody's put any questions. I propose that we do the vote, or you've done it already, have you? No.
Yeah, not until you proposed it.
Okay, let's have that as a proposal then, to approve the plans that have been submitted.
Yeah, I'll second that, Kiera.
Thank you, Peter. So if we could all vote. It's going to be very quick, these meetings, isn't it?
That's carried, Kiera.
Fantastic, oh, that's really exciting, it'd be great if we can get that done and dusted. You know, so that we've got something to look forward to and the children's centre can go straight into the place, that'd be amazing, wouldn't it? And so.
I think Rosalind has got a question, my computer froze, so I can't see the question.
Oh, I can't see a question?
No, I just wanted to say I thought it all looked wonderful.
Oh, right, okay.
I think it looks really exciting and splendid.
Oh, thank you, Rosalind, that's excellent. I think, you know, it's been a bit of a big jump to make, but it's great that we've got this opportunity to do it quickly and I think it will make a big difference when they're in and actually they've got a place of their own. So now we've got to work out how to finance it. So Sally, again, do you want to just talk a little bit about this?
Yeah, so because of the cost, you can see I've only got one quote there, but because of the cost, we need to go into a procurement process. So I need the council to agree that we move into a procurement process, I can't say that very well. And then we can call an extra meeting when all the quotes are received, so that's the next stage.
Yeah, because it's obviously quite a bit of work. There's a limit that we can just go ahead and approve without, or Sally has the authority to approve. So with this, we have to get certain quotes and then agree that that's what we want to do, but we've got some idea of roughly how much it will be because we've got the first quote. So I'd like to propose that we agree.
Sorry, Kiera, Mike would like to ask.
Oh yeah, sorry, Mike.
Thank you, I just wanted to know what the time scale would be for the alterations?
I think they said about a month, they should be able to get it all done in a month.
Yeah, thank you.
So can we have permission or approval for Sally to go ahead and get more estimates for the work? If you could all fill in the. Fantastic.
Brilliant, that's carried.
Great, thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is the 20 mile per hour speed zone in the town centre.
Sorry, Kiera, to interrupt, but before that, we just need to approve where we're thinking we might like to get the funding from. So yeah, I've put a recommendation forward, we've got a youth service reserve left over from when we used to run the Fae site and that's of just over £11,000 and we've also got just over £6,000 left over from the Bloor Homes fund that we used to replace the Pump House Project roof. The place fundraising committee have also got a sum of money of £6,000. So that brings us up to almost there, to be honest. We just would need to do a little bit of fundraising, I think that would be a shortfall of just over £6,000. So at this stage, we need to agree that we can use the youth service reserve and the Bloor Homes reserve for this purpose.
Okay, so I'd like to put that forward as a proposal then, please.
Yeah, I'll second it, Kiera.
Thank you, and if we could vote in the comments?
Just a sec, you're all too quick for me. Talking and doing at the same time.
Interesting that it came up, funding from the Highworth Road site as well. So obviously this won't do for this project, but it looks like there might be some in the pot for the future.
Yeah, absolutely, we've just received a silver payment of just over £7,000 from the Park Road.
Yeah, very good.
Day as well, so that's good.
Does anybody else's meeting chat jump about? Yes. Yes. Okay.
So that's carried, Kiera.
Great. Now we can get on to the 20 mile an hour zone. So I think you're all up to date with what's going on with this. We wanted to look at costs of investigating how feasible it would be. So the proposal is to proceed with a consultation, there is a cost associated with it. Sally, do you want to just again give us the background?
This is Marcy's project, so I'll hand you whatever.
I can, yeah, I can give you an update, I uploaded the document just an hour ago. So the officer came back to me with some costs, precise costs this time, explaining that we'll need to do a speed survey in four different sites, one in Grosse Street, one Marlborough Street, one in London Street and one in Church Street. And the cost approximately will be £500, that would be the first thing to approve. Then after that, there will be a consultation of £3,190 plus VAT. No, sorry, £3,190, that's it. One consultation is successful, there will be extra costs for the actual signs and road marking. We do also have, so we're talking about the cost of signs and road marking of £14,000, 156 plus VAT. But having said that, we do have funds from S106 monies from two different pots and those was total of £2,809 and 28p. And then we also have a contribution from a match funding that the traffic advisory committee made as aware of, which is of £7,000 and 78p. So there are, although the costs have gone quite high because the 20 speed limit is going to be in a major road. So therefore the cost will be higher than we thought. We do have some contribution from different monies to funds to contribute to this project. So now the question is whether you want to go ahead or not.
So yeah, I understand what you're saying about about having sufficient funds or some funding that might cover, but how much is the how much is the estimated cost of doing the consultation and putting the signs up? So if the consultation goes well and it all goes ahead, we've got some idea of what it costs us to make the town centre 20 miles an hour?
Yeah, yeah, so the cost of the consultation will be £3,190 and the cost of signs and road will be £14,000. So we're looking at £17,300 something for consultation signs and road markings. And we do have so far around £9,000 contribution from different funds. So the rest will be needed, will need to be funded by Farringdon Town Council.
So I guess the discussion or the thing that we need to consider is do we want to spend £17,000 on putting a 20 mile an hour speed limit in the town centre? That's the first consideration, it's just for conversation, for some comments. So maybe can we talk about that, people, do we think that's a good idea? This was brought forward from a member of the public.
Yes.
Oh, we've got lots of hands up. Bethia, the shortfall, we think is give me that figure again, Marcy, yeah, 6,000?
We're talking about really what we need to actually afford ourselves will be about £9,000.
Okay.
Yeah, about £9,000 we're talking about, yeah, because the rest will be funded by a different project.
Mike, hands up.
I wonder if we could take this in two stages, that we can proceed to the consultation and see what the results of the consultation are. And if in the consultation you can explain it's going to cost money to see if the people who can respond are willing to spend that sort of money.
Yeah, it will have to be.
In two stages, so we do the consultation, if the consultation's fine, then we can consider the next step of actually having to do it. Of course, if it's positive, then we are going to be committed. But you know, Marcy has said we've got some monies to come in from other sources, so it's not as bad as it seems. Be a good idea, I think, because people would like it, I'm sure.
Because remember, there was something focused specifically on the town centre and with all the project that Sally's been working on with the benches and the licence for the table to be outside, the idea for Farringdon Town Council to create that environment of pedestrian friendly, you know, like a community focused centre. So that was the idea, in my, yeah, there might be more funds available in the future, but it is definitely a one, the first stage would be speed survey consultation, first of all.
Thank you, Marcy, Stephen, hands up. Stephen Smith.
Thanks, Kiera, I just wanted to ask if that £9,000 figure includes contributions from the county council or not? I suspect it does, I think Marcy has answered my question, but I just wanted to check.
There is, the founder highways made us aware of, it was the parish fund and I think that is associated with the county council, I have to go back to that to you because that's a figure given to us by a county council officer.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks.
James, you've got your hand up. James, is he there? No. Perhaps he was putting his hand up to be excused. Mike, let's come back to you and if James reappears.
Hello? Hello?
Oh, James, yes, go ahead to your question.
I mean, the, Mike has, the question I want to ask, Mike has answered it, yeah, so, asked it, yeah, so, thank you.
Brilliant, Mike, do you have another one?
Shrivnham have done this, I wonder if we could ask Shrivnham what it costs them to actually put a 20 mile an hour speed limit in?
Yeah, I think that's a really good idea and how effective or perhaps what the you know, if there was any negative connotations from people's comments?
I think it'd be interesting to see what process they had to go through with the, you know, with the consultation. I mean, there's only one strip, isn't there, in Shrivnham, on the main road? But it'd be interesting to see what it costs them.
Yeah, I think it would. And can we do that, Marcy, ask?
Yeah, I can ask, I can definitely ask, yes.
And I'm getting, the feeling is that we ought to go ahead with the expense of the survey and then reconsider whether we want to go ahead on obviously the results of the survey and on the funding situation.
Yes, okay, well, in that case I'll prepare a poll so everybody can vote.
Yeah, let's do a poll. To go ahead with the undertaking of the survey. Oh, actually, we've got it down as a consultation, so I'm guessing they have to get some feedback from the public anyway at that point.
Yeah, absolutely, they'd have to go to survey, they'd go to survey first and then the results of the survey would go to consultation. So then we would be in much more of a stronger position to make that decision, I think, when we have the public's view behind us.
So it will be, it is proposed to proceed to speed survey and consultation, to make it a little bit more specific.
Thank you.
It is, I didn't see that.
It's just, it should just be coming up on the chat, James, to proceed to the consultation process for the 20 mile an hour speed limit restriction in the centre of town. But it's not come up yet, I haven't got it yet.
Come on, sorry for this, one second, why it's not come up?
Don't worry. We're all learning. Chrissie, you're still on the call?
You have.
Yes, yeah, I'm still here.
Oh, you won't allow me to do it for some reason.
Should I do it?
Can you do it, it's just almost like asking me for some technical payment.
Okay, I'll do it.
Sorry.
Don't pay anybody, Marcy, especially if they've got an account in Kenya or something like that with an uncle who needs to be removed from the country. Few seconds, nearly there. There we go. Okay. Sorry, that's not spelt very well. I did it quickly. Survey. It'll be a new word. Excellent. Six apes. So that's carried. Is that correct? Very good. Thank you. Okay, so the next item on the agenda, number eleven, is the town centre benches, um, to receive and consider quotes. Uh, fair to say there's been much consternation about these benches and, um, I don't think we're ever gonna agree, but Sally has come up with some good suggestions, um, but I'd value your comments and feedback about what Sally, do you want to just give some background again?
Yeah, of course. So we decided back in July last year that we would like to move towards having some benches on the apron outside the old town hall and the financial committee signed five thousand pounds to look at this project. And we've looked at many benches across the month, looking at some artistically designed ones. Um, but they came up so expensive and we were concerned about how the community would feel about spending a lot of money on it. So we've now narrowed it down to some recycled material benches, which you can see before you in my, in my summary. Um, and we thought the best way forward was to take this to consultation. So what we're asking you today is to choose one of those options to take forward to, um, consultation. The benches will be engraved with some quotes to keep the fun and quirky side. But obviously with a historic town centre, the town centre regeneration work in the heart, he felt that we shouldn't have anything too bright and colourful because we need to respect the heritage of the town centre. But we wanted to keep the quirky side of the town with quotes.
It's fair to say some of the discussions were quite, um, well, not heated, but there was a lot of discussion because finding that balance of, you know, regeneration and feeling that we're doing something and impactful um, doesn't sit nicely with the conservation and the traditional side. Uh, Mike, you've got your hand up. You've got some comments, feedback for us.
Yes, looking at the, um, pictures, I like the planter in quote one, but the seat in quote two uh, looks more comfortable. Are they both the same size, uh, these seats? And the other question is, are they going to be screwed down? Because looking at the location plan and the way they're distributed, what will happen when there's an event on like Follyfest? Uh, can they, would they be removable so that they don't get well, obstructing the crowd?
Yes, they would be removable, but it would be hoped that they would add to events like Follyfest because that'd give people places to sit and watch the, the event. But they would be, they'd be bolted down. So if Follyfest wanted us to take them out, then we could.
Right, okay. So my first point was, um, looking at the, the seats, um, quote two seat looked a bit more comfortable than with the armrests as well and the extra plank across the back. Maybe not. Um, but what there are, there's obviously a big difference in, in price, isn't there?
I think it's the arms that add to the cost.
Right.
Uh, Rosalind. Sorry, we, sorry, we have five thousand pounds allocated to this project, but I've also applied for an additional four thousand pounds of S one O six funding. So I hope that the budget will be around nine thousand pounds and that will include a seat behind, um, the, where the old budget store was.
Rosalind, you had your hand up? Did you want to say something?
Yeah, I, oh, I've just lost my phone.
Don't worry.
On a mobile phone is jolly hard. Um, I can't see a quote, a, a figure for the quote for, um, induction.
Sorry, say that again, Rosalind.
I can't see the figure for the quote for, um, option two.
It's five thousand five hundred and sixty-two pounds.
All right. Is it, um, as Mike was suggesting, is it possible to mix and match the planter from the first option with the seat from the second one?
Absolutely.
Because I think that's a nicer combination.
I agree. Um, Jane, you've got something to say?
Yeah, uh, actually, the same point has, um, has just been made. Uh, I prefer the planter from quote one and the seat from quote two. That was it really.
Yeah, I mean, certainly the planter from quote one is more interesting with the, with the shape, isn't it? And somehow it looks more.
Friendly.
Yeah. Um, I guess the, the big question really is if we have arms on the benches in this sort of half porchy shape, is that going to be obstructive for events? I, I don't know. I mean, I, I feel like I've been on this project such a long time. I'm sick of looking at exciting benches, but I think I didn't want it to look like Bracknell Bus Station. Because that was some of the options. And, and if you start getting into really different designs, it gets ridiculously expensive. Um, but it's whether we want the arms on all of the benches.
Angela has a question.
Oh, yes.
Uh, and I was just gonna echo, uh, Jane and Rosalind is that I do like the planter for one. I do like the arms. I think that would be kind of quite helpful, especially, um, to stop you falling off the bench. But I, I know what you, you know, I know what you mean, Kira, is that, you know, you think, have to think about putting the arms on. But I just think the second one, especially with, as Mike said, that, that extra panel at the back. And I'm just thinking about young children or anything or anything falling through that gap. You know, obviously we don't know how big it is, but it looks quite big on that, on the quote one. Um, so the, 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 you know, the extra panel on the back of the quote two. Uh, and I just think it's a little bit more aesthetic for the kind of feel that we'd like in the, you know, uh, in the area.
Thank you. Um, Rosalind, do you want to stand back in?
Um, yes. Can I just make the point that we wanted the engraving to be, um, conversation starter? So we would be looking into making that, um, a project for us because the idea is for people to sit and talk, not just to sit. Um, and also the Farringdon Community College had their mental health trail idea, which would fit in nicely with these benches. So I, I think there's, there's that aspect of it as well to, to, um, promote it.
Yes, and we do, we are looking at a friendship bench of some sort where people can sit if they want to speak to someone. And they can sit on that bench and it's an open invite really. If you're sitting there, it means you're happy to be spoken to. Because we're all so British and sitting on our own without speaking or smiling. So I think that's a really nice idea. Um, Mike, you're back in. Did you want to say something?
Looked at, uh, if we did a, a split, the, the bench for quote two is more expensive than the bench for quote one. And so that's, uh, would come to six thousand one hundred and thirty-three if we had the planter from vote one and the, the bench from quote two.
Thank you. That's really useful. We have Jane as well. Jane, yeah.
Hi. Which way are they facing?
Facing inwards, Jane, towards the town hall.
Okay.
That's a good point actually though, because if we've got the bus stop, perhaps we should face one the other way.
Or if you, if you can remove them, um, for, say, Follyfest, you can always turn them around, deciding, you know, if you've got wrong the first time.
Should we ask these questions in the public consultation?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Good idea, Sally.
Bethia has a question.
Uh, yeah, um, just looking, I, I, obviously I prefer the benches, like everybody else seems to, from the second quote. Um, the planters are very imposing, probably in both of them, but there's no scale that I could see. Is there any sort of idea of the scale? Because those great big black planters would be quite something.
Yeah, so the scale should be on the quote.
Oh, okay. I didn't see that.
Yeah, I obviously I did you a summary to make it easy, but there is a quote in the pack as well.
Yeah, thank you. I'll have a look.
They're not very big though. They fit between the benches. They're just, they're not a massive, massive planter. I think they're about six hundred across, six hundred millimetres.
Uh-huh.
That's the size of a washing machine. So no, they're not very big at all, are they? And I think the arms would stop people trying to run across the planters and the benches maybe. Okay. Um, so what I'm gonna propose is that we go forward to public consultation with the, um, hexagonal planters and the armed benches. If everybody's happy, that seems to be the general feeling. Do I have a second for that proposal? Yeah, I'll second it. Oh, everyone. I'm not sure who that was. Dan.
Hi, uh, it's Rosalind.
Oh, thank you. So if you could vote in your chat. Thank you.
I can't have a vote then.
Thank you very much. That's covered. Um, number twelve on the agenda, I paint, oh, sorry.
I didn't get a card up at all then.
Oh. We've got nine agrees.
Well, it must be a ghost doing mine then.
Let's have a look. Uh, um, Rosalind's not showing.
Not, you're not.
No, you're not.
It didn't come up as a card as it has done every other time.
Perhaps you could agree or disagree verbally, Rosalind, then, Jordan.
I agree.
Excellent.
Any explanation why that might be, Chris? Why does it come up sometimes and not for others, Rosalind?
It, it should come up, but there's a, there's a speed. Everyone's got different connection speeds with internet. Um, that's the only thing it can be really, um.
And all the rest have come up straight away.
Yeah, I mean, what you can do is you can, you can close the meeting chat and open it up again, uh, and that can sometimes bring it up. So it, it literally is the speed of your internet where it comes up. So, for example, um, I've got my phone and I've also got my laptop viewing at the same time. Uh, but my, my phone comes up at least thirty seconds a minute after it does on my laptop, which is more powerful. So there's, there's varying degrees of, of, of that on there.
Thank you. So it just looks like a technical glitch. And as long as we can approve either verbally or in the chat box um, separately, I don't see that that'll be a problem, but it's just interesting to know. Thank you. Um, so moving on to item number twelve, the painting bursary. Sally, do you want to talk about that?
Yeah. And we've had an application from a house on London Street, obviously for data protection. I won't give you any more detection in front of you.
Have we all had a chance to look at that? Are there any questions? So we're looking for a hundred and fifty pounds contribution to a three hundred and forty-five pound project. Can we put that up as a proposal, please? How many of those, um, have we paid out now, Sally?
This will be the third.
Is that all? Every time I go to submit, my box moves.
Uh, Bethia has a question.
Oh, yes. Go ahead, Bethia.
Mute, unmute. Um, I was just wondering, do we keep any, um, sort of records afterwards? Any sort of before-after photos, any impact study or anything like that for these cases?
Good question.
There will be, well, we haven't had one to completion yet. Yeah, so we haven't had a project through to completion yet, so it's a hundred percent we will.
Uh-huh.
That, yeah. I just wonder whether, I mean, if there's only been three applications, it's not, you know, I, I thought we might have people, especially this time of year for the planters. Maybe we need to be pushing that again with, I know we did the flyers. Um, if anybody's got any bright ideas how we might be able to push that forward or do something different in the future with it. That's worth thinking about, isn't it? It's not exactly a roaring success with only three applications so far. Um, Stephen, you've got your hand up.
Yeah, and I'm sorry if I missed it in our previous meeting, uh, Kira. I just wanted to ask what the criteria were for, uh, for allocating the grant.
Sally, do you want to be, fill us in on that one?
Yeah, so the purpose of the, of the grant is to improve the look of the town centre. So the, the initial criteria is that it has to be within a zone. And those details are all on our website. If you have a look, the, the zone is marked on there and also the terms and conditions are there as well. But the main criteria is that he faces onto the town centre.
Okay.
And it can be a business or a residential property.
Yeah, but within the designated zone, yeah?
Within the designated zone, yeah.
Yeah, fab, thank you.
And, I mean, it, because we haven't had many applications, if there was something from just outside the zone that we felt, would it be improved, um, by the contribution? I, we would consider it. Um, if we had our hands ripped off with people within the criteria already, we, we might have to be very strict. But I think if, you know, there was a, a shop or something that was just outside the zone, we would definitely look at it, consider it. Um, Kimberly, hands up?
Yes, hi. So I, I mean, I'm actually interested in doing an application for this because my house is within the zone. But I just didn't feel that it was appropriate at this time when we're only, you know, I, I, to have to meet a painter and, you know, so that, I, I wonder if that's one of the reasons why we haven't had the uptick is because, you know, i- is that allowed? Can I arrange for painters to come to the house? I don't know, but I don't wanna be in trouble, you know, for, for having a socially distance meetup outside of my house. So I mean, I guess that was my point is, you know, do we not have the, the take up because of the conditions that we're in?
I think that's a fair point. You know, things are, are slow and closed down at the moment. Um, but equally, you know, some people might see it as an opportunity to, um, you know, be improving the outside of their properties. But the money's there, it needs to be spent, is there, is there to be used. So get your application in.
Okay, so, so it is okay, right, with everyone if, if I do a socially distance meetup with painters? That, that's not gonna be like, well, we don't have to fire in the folly anymore. But, you know, that's not gonna be splashed on the front page, councillor breaking, um, you know, social distancing rules.
I think the onus would be on the business owner who is coming to, um, to deliver a service to you. Some, some companies are working and some aren't, and it depends on their insurance and that sort of thing.
I just didn't, I didn't, you know, I just did not wanna get, uh, uh, it talked about on social media again. So I was just gonna wait until we were all allowed to hang out again.
You will anyway, but, um, yeah, well, I'm checking.
Don't tell me I don't look. Um, okay, that's fine. Thank you for the application. I appreciate it.
We have Rosalind to talk and then Angela.
Rosalind, you go ahead. We're not hearing you. Are you still on mute?
Um, so, oh, sorry, there. Um, is Mings in the, in the zone?
I believe it is, Sally. Can you help us out with that one?
I haven't got the zone in front of me.
Someone go on.
I think.
Because it would be so lovely if that was done up, was people coming into Farringdon.
It would. Does anybody know them? Do we know the building, I know? No. Um, I mean, I think that would be a classic case. If it's not in the zone, then it would be something that we would consider. It's, it's not.
It just gives such a horrible impression if you're just coming into Farringdon to see that building.
I agree. I agree. Angela, you have your hand up?
Yeah, no, I just really wanted to say that I abstain from any comment on, uh, Kim's query. Uh, not about whether she can put an application form in, but whether she can get, uh, workmen over to have. Uh, not about whether she can put an application form in, but whether she can get, uh, workmen over to have a look. Um, I think we have to follow the lines of central government guidance at the moment until it changes on Sunday regarding opening up working practices. As far as I was aware, that the lockdown was still in place and, and I wouldn't like Kim to think that, you know, we've given permission, you know, of, of builders or, you know, her to, to ask people to come in, especially as the police are actually actively monitoring it as well.
I think that's a very valid point and hopefully you heeded that, Kimberly.
Yeah. Just, just follow government, government guidance. That's on the website at the moment. That's all I can.
Thank you.
But I mean, that, that, that's why I haven't done anything, you know, in the interim, uh, besides had a chat with our district councillor, David Grant, about painting in general, um, just as we were passing by on the street. But yeah, it's not, you know, I don't want to get in any trouble and I just think, you know, I'd love to employ a, a painter and give them some work, but again, it's not worth, uh, getting everyone in.
Yeah, the guidance may change quite quickly. Uh, I mean, I know that there's a.
Fingers crossed, yes.
Yeah, no, we just, I think that we all just have to, you know, keep in line with what the government guidance is.
Thank you, Angela. Um, Jane, you've got your hand up?
Yeah, it, oh, yes, it was about Mings. I had a conversation with them quite a few years ago. That shop was run from Hong Kong. So the chance of talking to the people who run it aren't going to happen. That's not going to happen. Ever.
Okay, well, if anybody, we keep our ears to the ground really, and if anybody has any contacts or makes contact there, I wouldn't be adverse to knocking on the door and saying hello one day.
I could talk to the neighbours, see if they know anything.
Yeah, because I bet they would quite appreciate if it had a lick of paint and a new sign maybe.
Yeah, Melissa and Tracy, yeah.
You know everyone, Jane. You got your hand up. Oh, sorry, Jane, had you finished?
No, that's it.
Bethia.
Um, I think the district council has all of the sort of landlord, um, details so it can be looked up. I know when I was in my previous role, um, there was quite a comprehensive list of those, if that helped. Um.
Would really help, wouldn't it? Because we could go through the district council to, um, communicate with them, I'm guessing.
Yeah, and other buildings as well, like, um, Davenport's old building, because I think that is one of the biggest eyesores in, in the town centre.
Yeah, so can we perhaps feed into Sally, any buildings that we feel could, could benefit from, um, receiving our grants, i.e. need, needs a little bit of TLC? And, and feed that in because, um, perhaps we can action getting in touch with the building owners. The ones that are empty, it, we can still put them on the list because they, they still have landlords and owners that may well benefit from, you know, accessing the funds. Thank you.
Okay, that's carried, Kim.
Brilliant, thank you very much. So number 13, I'm going to speed up a little bit, folks. Corn Exchange Old Chamber lease, um, to receive a request from the current tenant for a rent reduction during closure. Um, Sally, a little bit of background quickly if we can.
Yeah, um, so they've come to me obviously with a press, they're not using the building at the moment because they're following government guidelines and working from home where they can. Um, so we're obviously saving a little bit on height, on light and rent, and their business has fallen away a little bit, so they're asking, um, sorry, they're asking for, um, a rent reduction, but only if they can't get access to any other financial support.
Anybody comments? I mean, I think in the light of the fact that we're going to be using it fairly soon and want to be doing some work on it, they're a company that have given us good service in terms of payments previously. If we can, I think we should be as kind as we can. Anybody object to, um, what I'm going to propose is that we grant a 50% or, uh, rent relief if the tenant does not receive the Vale Grants funding? Anybody second that or have any other comments or ideas?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Jane. If everyone could vote then, please.
Kira, I think Mike's got his hand up.
Oh, yes, thank you. Mike, go ahead.
Uh, no, I, I, I support exactly what, uh, what you said. Um, let's see if they get the grant and they have been a good client.
That's carried, Cara.
Thank you.
I didn't get a card again, but I agree.
Thank you, Rosalind. Okay, um, number 14, town council meetings. To consider the annual town meeting scheduled for May. We are obliged to have two public town meetings a year. Um, and obviously we won't be having the one on the 18th. Um, I'd like to propose that we postpone it until we can meet again in a normal, in a verticallas way, please. This is pretty.
Mike has.
Oh, Mike, yes, you've commented.
I think that's sensible. Um, I think it's very difficult if you have a town meeting that you really need the town there to, um, take part, not just have to go through a virtual meeting. So I think that's eminently sensible.
Thank you, Mike. I mean, I, 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 we are managing to do this meeting, but I'm sure we're all finding it quite exhausting really. So the thought of having general public being able to chip in feels, I know we never have not had great attendance in the past, but, um, I think a face-to-face is more effective for a team, a, a town meeting. So if we, um, could propose that then, please, Sally.
Stephen has his hand up.
Oh, yes, Stephen.
Thanks, Kira. I'm, I'm, I support the principle and I think it's eminently common sense, not, obviously we can't have a gathering if we can't have a gathering. But I think we, I think it would be helpful if, when we communicate the fact that we've postponed it, we say that there's always the opportunity on a monthly basis for people to get involved in the council meetings, ask questions, et cetera. You know, and, and that dialogue, that, that channel of dialogue isn't closed off until we, we come out of lockdown.
Yeah, I think that's a very good point, Sally. If we could make sure that's clear in the communications.
Absolutely. Mike has again, uh, question.
I think that's a very good point that Stephen made. I think we should, uh, communicate as openly as possible and explain the situation so that people don't think they're being excluded. You know, it's a very good suggestion, Stephen.
Okay, um, have we all voted? Are we all there?
Yeah, that's carried.
Yeah, thank you. So in, in the same vein, the annual, uh, town council, the annual meeting of the town council scheduled for the 14th of May, um, I propose that we, uh, postpone that until we can meet in the normal way as well, please.
Yeah, I'll second that, Kira.
Thank you. We'll wait for our poll. Everybody's got drinks.
Well, Liz, um, would like to speak.
Hello, Liz. Speak away. You might have to come off mute. Now, can anybody hear Liz?
Liz, if you can't be heard, you could type your question into the chat.
Oh, I'm having a battle with my really slow responding computer, but I finally managed it. So I'm just worried about, um, accountability and democracy that we keep pursuing meetings until we can all come back to normal, because that's going to happen, is it, in the very near future? So I just think we need to have some sort of option that we can sort of invite people to meet, you know, for council meetings.
I think it's a very good point. It's one that all the councils are struggling with, looking at the OALC threads that are going around. Um, I don't know what the answer is. Sally, can you suggest anything? How can we be proven to be democratic and engaging at this time?
I think that's, that's, that's very difficult, isn't it? I think, um, if we're not meeting normally, then we won't be making any big decisions. You know, things like that, we're changing to the town centre, we're going to go to public consultation, and I think that's very important that we keep the public involved in that way. And we try and hold off any big decisions until we can meet properly and engage the public. And the meetings, as they go along, this meeting's being live streamed now on YouTube and people will be able to review it. So that is actually a step forward in terms of informing the public. So um, I hope the next meeting we'll be able to invite public into the meeting to join us and have a public participation time. So as we move on with the, the technology, I hope we'll get better and we'll be able to involve the public more.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mike, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I think this is the government recommendation, isn't it, that people have to carry on in post? For instance, the, the crime commissioner was supposed to change this year, but can't uh, until the government says that these things can be changed. So unfortunately, we're going to have to carry on as we are without a, an annual general meeting.
Yes, um, are there going to be complications with regard to approve? I mean, I know we've approved the, the annual accounts as a council. Do the public have any obligation like that to do annually, Sally?
So the public, we have a public viewing time, so there's a period of time where the public can view the accounts in the office. Obviously, that will only be online this year. But the audit office has expanded the deadline, so we have got a longer deadline. So hopefully, you know, we would be able to invite the public to look, to look in. But I think, you know, we're going to be posting them on our website and on Facebook so that they will be accessible.
Okay, that sounds good.
Peter to speak.
Peter?
Yeah, I'm just concerned that, uh, we're saying we postpone it. I mean, if the government say, well, sorry, you can't have meetings till the end of the year, that's going to cause severe problems. Could we just reconsider this in a month's time in light of, or reconsider it actively in, you know, not just let it go on, not, not, it's just not happening? Um, I'd like to reconsider it in a, when the government issues new guidelines or within a month, something like that.
Well, perhaps at our next meeting, we can review how the meetings are working and what the government guidelines are at that point. I think we've done the poll to, um, postpone the meetings that are pending within the next couple of weeks. Um, and then we, we keep it on review, as you say, um, and promote other means of communication within the council. Um, if that, if that sounds satisfactory to everyone. Um, Mike, you've got your hand up again?
Yes, I don't think this is at our discretion, Peter. I think that, uh, this is, uh, an edict that's come down from, uh, from central government, so I think we have to follow those rules.
Angela? Angela Finn, are you there? Are you on mute?
Yes, I am. Sorry about that. Yeah, I was just going to say, that's exactly what, uh, what I was going to say that Mike said. Um, and the fact is that it's, it's playing it really day by day, I think. You know, we don't know what's going to happen and, uh, and really, as long as it's just on the radar for us, um, and then we can move forward with it. But at the end of the day, whatever, you know, um, central government, local government make, then, then we would, you know, we have to adhere to that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so that leads us forward to 14C, to receive and consider a revised schedule of meetings to September 2020. And I propose that we meet bi-monthly until we can meet in the normal way or need to consider anything quicker in an urgent way, um, via these virtual meetings, tech permitting. I don't see any other way that we can do it. So let's put that forward as a proposal, please, Sally.
Should I add that this is kept under constant review?
Yes, as per Peter's comment.
Yeah.
Um, Angie, did you have your hand up?
I was going to second it.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, bear with me.
I'm very impressed that Mike's got his collar and shirt on and his chain, of course. Thank you, Mike. Okay, we should have a poll coming up.
It's there now. Mike also would like to speak again.
Sorry, Marcia, say that again?
Got to maintain standards, I think, so.
It's good that somebody does, yes.
Absolutely.
As Sally mentioned before we started the meeting, we're just grateful people have got tops on. Okay, we've got seven agrees. Is that? Thank you very much. Um, item number 15, delegated authority during COVID-19 crisis. Uh, we need to, uh, receive a list of decisions taken under delegated authority. Um, Sally, do you want to just explain the proposal?
Um, so there's, you've all got the list in front of you of the decisions that have been taken under the delegatory authority that was given at the meeting in March.
Has anybody got any questions or comments on those? If not, please vote. Thank you. Rosalind, are you getting these?
Yeah, she, she, Rosalind's voting.
Brilliant. Well spotted, Marcia.
I, I'm checking on Rosalind, actually.
Eagle eyes, I think.
Because of the technical problem.
We're getting there, aren't we? We are getting there. It feels a little bit more natural now. I'll probably do something really stupid.
That's carried, Kira.
Okay, brilliant. Thank you very much. Um, that was, was that both B and C, Sally?
No, we need to do them all separately.
Okay, we need to do them separately. So, uh, number B, to propose, propose to delegate authority for council and committee decisions until the next meeting to the clerk in conjunction with the mayor, deputy mayor, chair of finance and audit and relevant committee chair via, um, and we'll vote in the poll if we can do that. Thank you. Seven votes, is that correct?
That is, yeah.
Marvelous. So the, uh, 15C, to propose to delegate authority to respond to minor planning applications until the next meeting of the planning committee. And we're delegating that to the deputy clerk in conjunction with the chair of planning and highways, mayor and deputy mayor, please. Is there a, a formal definition of a minor planning application?
Uh, Mike would like to speak.
Mike?
I think we should add that any, any, any councillor can of course respond to the, to comments, um, that Marcia will put out of planning, the planning applications, but anybody can respond. So it doesn't disqualify anybody from making a contribution because that wouldn't be right.
That's a good point, Mike. Um, and a question I've got, which I'm sure you'll be able to help me with, or, um, Jane will, is there a definition of a minor application? Is that specified or is that at discretion?
Uh, can, I could answer that. Any minor application would be application with, um, ten or, or less than 10 dwellings.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Liz, you've got a question?
Hello, 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 so I'm here now.
Yeah.
I just wanted to, um, ask, I'm sorry if I've missed the point. Why can't we have our meetup normally in our subcommittee meetings doing this virtual online mechanism? On a regular basis, because we seem to be cancelling all our other meetings apart from a bi-monthly council. Especially with the planning, I think that's what I'm concerned about.
Um, we can still have sub-meetings.
Not sure why there has to be.
If we want to. Sally, do you want to?
I'm just worried about.
The planning meetings aren't postponed, it's just the, if there are minor planning applications, Liz. So anything with ten or more dwellings would still have to go to a council meeting, a collective of the Planning Committee. Is that correct, Mike?
Better. Okay, I didn't quite get that bit. That sounds better. I'm happy with that.
Liz, we'll call meetings as and when we need to. We've just, we're just getting, we're just, we're just cancelling the schedule and we're calling them on an as and when basis. Because obviously they're much more difficult and not as democratic as as a public, as a normal meeting. So but if there is a big planning application or something that the Planning Committee feel that needs to go to go to an online meeting, then we'll call one.
Good. That's it. I'm just worried about democracy and accountability, but that sounds okay.
Okay, Jane, you've got your hand up? Take yourself off mute.
Sorry.
Right.
Small planning things quite often don't come to council anyway, because they can be dealt with by the officers of the district. Um, and I forgot what the other thing I was going to say was.
I'd like to come back to you. We'll.
A lot of planning applications won't come in at the moment because of the small ones, because they can't get workers to do anything because of the.
Lots of, yeah. Thank you, Jane. Mike?
I think if we're talking about things like conservatories and extensions and things like that, these would be minor. I would say that if there was something controversial in someone building a new house, I think they should be open to everybody, even though I think as Marcia said, minor probably is fewer than ten houses. Certainly less than two, I think it's certainly fewer than two hundred. But if it's, I think, you know, something like ten houses, that would be significant as far as we're concerned. So I think when it comes down to delegating responsibility, that means for extensions and stuff like that, unless it's controversial, of course. But again, all councillors should be able to respond to a planning application that Marcia can collate.
Yeah, and absolutely, all the all the planning applications will be sent around to full, to the full committee. So if anyone wants to call a meeting at any time, they can do so.
Everybody clear on that?
Yeah.
Good, thank you. Thank you, Liz. It was a good point to bring up. Um, okay, so item number sixteen, for items for information only. So please direct any questions to Sally. Covid nineteen update. Sally, do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, so we've obviously, Adele has done your report on in terms of our events and VE Day. And the town council are responding when we can. We've got the phones directed to my mobile. We're running the food bank. And the town is responding in quite an astounding way. Farringdon Viral Kindness, which I know several councillors have been involved in, has responded really well. The town is all pulling together, really. It's just a very positive feeling out there that obviously the town council are running the food bank, we're getting lots of support from the community, lots of donations. And yeah, it's a pleasure to be working in the town at this time with everyone with such a positive outlook and and all pulling together.
Thank you. I mean, it certainly does feel that the Farringdon community spirit has kicked in. And the people are friendly and seem to be helping each other, whether that's informally or through the the community support group, which is great, isn't it? Has anybody else got any comments or questions they want to ask about the Covid operation? I think we perhaps like to give thanks to the staff that have obviously had to adapt fairly quickly to new working practices. And do you want to give a little overview of how, you know, who's working still with the staff, Sally, and what's happening there?
Yeah, so the staff are all still working. And we, the information centre staff are all working really hard to get all their trails and things in place. So we're going to come out of this with a really well-stocked information centre with some really nice walking and history trails. Everyone's doing online training as well. We've got two members of staff who are undertaking Ilka, which is the very first clerk in qualification. Marcia is undertaking Silka during this time. So we're using it to the, to our best. And obviously, all the staff are involved in running the food bank as well.
And we took over the running of the food bank from the volunteers.
We did, yes, because they all needed to self-isolate. So we took that over and we moved, we've moved it into the bigger room in the pump house, so we can safely work socially distanced. And we've got a really good system in place to keep everyone safe.
And I know you're all aware of Farringdon Viral Kindness and and just a big thank you to how well they're getting on. Al Sylvester's running it, you know, really well, and they've had remarkable statistics and feedback. So I suspect we might be able to invite him in or at least give a report of what's going on with that and the types of calls that they're getting. But I know the appreciation from the public who are accessing that is huge. And I know I would want to say a thank you to the town council as well for their support in, you know, promoting that and also making referrals too. So I'm really pleased to see that happening, because I know not all town and parish councils have got such a good understanding. And in some areas, they are running that service themselves. So I think we'd say it's a, it's with great relief that we haven't had to do it. Thank you to the volunteers who are stepping up to do it. Uh, thank you. Something went ping. Oh, that was to note the Covid update. Thank you. VE Day plans. Sally, do you want to talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, so we've got some online plans. If you visit our website or look at our Facebook page, there's a little programme which we're encouraging people to have picnics in their own gardens and to decorate their houses in red, white and blue. And Mike has done an address for the community, which will be put live on Friday for VE Day. So and obviously, Kira has done a little piece on Oxford, on Radio Oxford. So we're trying to keep that going. And yeah, but please look on the website and on the Facebook page for the online programme.
Jane, you have your hand up?
I did. It was just an accolade to the Farringdon Viral Kindness lot, because they have done several jobs for me and they've been absolutely lovely. Because I'm stuck here and can't go out.
Yeah, I mean, I'm privy to some of the communication that goes through the social media site. And I have to say, you know, everybody without exception is being served, if you like, or 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 responded to really quickly. And people are just very appreciative of the help that they've been given. It's timely and it's appropriate. And the safeguarding that's put in place is is very appropriate as well. So I think we can be very proud.
They they collected my medication from James, they're collecting my dog's medication from the vets. They've got me food and milk and eggs and they've been absolutely lovely.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you, Jane. Mike, you have your hand up?
Yes, I wanted to add my thanks to all the volunteers and particularly those who've maintained the food bank and the and the place as well. And it's a great shame that we can't go ahead with this reformal B plan, VE Day plans, but I thought it was worth making an address. I hope you like it. It's a very personal view, but I thought, you know, we ought to say something.
Yeah, I mean, I think Sarah Benson's been doing some videos for Perry Bishop and Chambers Estate Agent. And I know Bethia and I've done one and Al and Sally's done one. So, you know, they're knocking on the doors of people who, I guess, have got something to say. So it's really nice to see the feedback from those types of things as well. And Mike, I'm sure the town will be, you know, very grateful for your input as well. And at a time when you would have normally stood up and and made it a grand speech, they'll still hear it, which is nice to see. Thank you. The Community Awards, hot off the press. Here we go then, Sally, do you want to look at that one?
So I can leave it, I can leave. Mike has run all the winners today and he's been to see some as well. So Mike, would you like to announce who won? You're on mic, you're on mute, Mike.
Yes, I'm sorry. I'll have to get the appropriate email to do this. But what happened on Tuesday was that I actually went down to actually talk to all of the people beforehand. Before it was done on social media, so I phoned most people, but two I actually did. And if I can find, now we go. No, not so right, no, I want, just a second. Here we go. Right, so the Clive Davis Community Hero Award was Peter White for the Farringdon Folly Star. So I phoned Peter and told him. The Group Award was for the Farringdon Fire and Rescue Service. And that was for Paul Webster, Station Commander Abingdon Wantage and Farringdon. So I phoned Paul and told him. And for the Business Award, it was a draw. So that was won jointly by Pat Thomas Butchers and Stay Grounded. So on Tuesday morning, I went down and actually dressed up coat, tie and chain. Because I thought it was a formal occasion and went to Pat Thomas and told them that they had won. And also I barged into the queue, actually keeping social distance. But I did ask, because it was a very good big queue for Stay Grounded, which had been in a wonderful service on providing things for people. So I told Jane directly that she'd won, so she was delighted. The Rick Ebsworth Community Volunteer Award was won by Maraid Boys. So I phoned Maraid and she was so delighted. And perhaps nicest of all, the Environmental Champion Award went to Matthew Adcock, who's twelve years old for all his work on bird boxes. So when I phoned up, I spoke to his mother, Rebecca, and Matthew was out with his father. And she said, can you phone back in two hours? So I won't tell him. So I duly phoned back two hours later and told Matthew, and he was very pleased. So it was a very well, thank you very much to Adele for organising that. And it was my pleasure and privilege to actually go and tell everybody that they'd won.
Thank you, Mike. I think, you know, it's another good thing that we can all celebrate. And at the time of the whole sort of Farringdon Viral Kindness starting up, I think a few people were thinking they would ought to appear. But obviously, the closing date for nominations and voting was prior to that. So I'm sure their time will come in terms of recognition. But it's really good to see those awards being given out to such worthy people. Thank you.
Can I say that I said to them that Adele will produce a certificate, I'll sign them, and then we can, we can send them duly and in the post.
Sally, you did send out, I think, very recently, some coin-type medallions. Was that for next year that you're suggesting those for?
I think that's for community heroes during the Covid.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Just ignore that then, everybody. And Farringdon in Bloom.
So obviously, we can't run the normal Farringdon in Bloom competition this year for obvious reasons. But we are in the place, Adele is running an online picture. It's not a competition, but she's encouraging the community to send their pictures of their gardens in the different categories. So we can have an online garden tour in conjunction with the online Chelsea Flower Show.
That sounds really good and a great idea. And hopefully, we'll get some more, everybody's gardens should be looking great, the amount of time that we're all spending in them. But we might get more entries and a different, a different type of person entering perhaps. So that'd be really good.
So please send your photographs to Adele.
I like Bethia's suggestion of having a best lawn. I think, and the category's already set, Sally.
Um, I think Adele, but they haven't been published yet. So if anyone's got a category they would like to suggest, then please contact Adele.
Okay, that's a great idea. Thank you. And so have we proposed all of those things?
We have, yeah.
In the polls, that's good. And they've all been carried.
Yeah.
That's great. Everybody's on the ball. Thank you. Um, planning applications. Um, Veil of the White Horse awaiting comments from Farringdon Town Council.
So we're passing on to Mike at this stage. Kira, you're done?
Thank you. All those speakers. Thank you very much.
Right, thank you. Well, we've got four planning applications before us. I propose that we can, we can go through those in order. Marcia, do you want to say something about about these planning applications as well?
Uh, yes, so we, just to give an update to the rest of the councillors, we recently had a conversation, virtual meeting with the developer of the High Water Road development. And we did have a response ready to submit. And the response was generally an objection on the queue on the basis of landscape and biodiversity. We had an issue with the access. Um, we did point at sustainability of the building. The design provider, the housing design provider, didn't seem to really follow the principle cited in the Farringdon Neighbour Plan. And we did read, we've been kept updated with the response given by the district councillors, by the tree officer, by the urban design officers who recently submitted the comment. Um, kind of highlighting similar points. In particular, they would like to have a revised design and access statement to get, that can show how the designers evolved since the proposal outlined in two thousand and sixteen. And they would like to see a proper listed points of their current design, urban design, how it answered back to the point listing the local fund two thousand and thirty-one for the southwest area of Farringdon. And so I think they all found that the statement provided is quite generic. And they would like to, the developer to go a little bit more in that. So at this, oh, there's been made the point on the surface water features to be kind of, should, they should make a contribution to the landscape and the biodiversity. So again, that was a point made by Jo in regards to the the suit system, the town kind of not allowing tree to be planted, especially on the high water roadside. So the basically, it's quite big, complicated matters, two hundred houses, less than two hundred houses. And obviously, the council would like to make sure that all these points are made aware to the officers, because it's a very important stage. And so my question would be for this application, whether you would like to to still propose an objection based on the points listed in the letter? Or if you would like to make any changes, but I'll need to submit this comment, to this response to the planning officer. Um, I mean, Jo can can can, you know, participate to this conversation in regards to drainage again, if councillor wants to listen to it. But yeah, my question would be now whether you still want to go ahead and submit, say, an objection. We know the great Oxford response has been an objection. We had quite a few comments from neighbours objecting to it, so.
We had a very good meeting yesterday, it was over an hour and a half with the developers, who did seem very positive. And it's unusual for developers to actually want to communicate like that. It reminded me of the early days when we spoke to Blower Homes, because Blower were very similar, that they wanted to work with the town council and not against it. And they dealt with most of the points in the comments that we'd made. I think it's still worth submitting the comments, because I think that they're valid. Also, as Marcia said, if you look at the planning portal, there have been some significant contributions from Thames Water and also from the Urban Design Officer and from the Arboreal Officer. And there's their recommendations, which really have to be taken care of. The Thames Water, in their, in their report, was saying they couldn't connect to the firewater system and they couldn't get potable water. But the developers said they spoke to Thames Water and it was, there was now an agreement that Thames Water had to provide a suitable supply of potable water and also deal with the sewerage problem. And they point out that we've heard Thames Water say these things before. They point out that we've heard Thames Water say these things before, of course. I think we're now 40 years down the line since they were supposed to upgrade the sewage works. But I mean, all in all, I think they do want to do the best they can. Whether, my concern is, we can object, whether it would be too negative. And I think the points would have to be dealt with anyway by the developers, because these are some of the points which have been raised by the district council, who are doing a very good job on this, I think.
My next thing will be preparing, obviously, a poll for councillor to vote.
I've done that, Marcia, it's in the comments.
All right, fantastic.
Yeah, I've just got hands up, I agree with Mike's comments in terms of the meeting. It did seem to be quite constructive. But I know we've had these meetings, consultation meetings with developers before. There was some lack of understanding of the sites, as well as some understanding of the site. For instance, they weren't aware that there was a food rendering plant within a stone's throw of the residences that they're building, which could have implications. And things that concerned me were, as Mike made reference to, the water situation. They were very adamant that because this agreement was made with Towns Valley that there wouldn't be a problem. And as Mike pointed out, you can have an agreement, but actually, if you've got no water, there's nothing that, you know, can be done. You can just fold your arms. One of the concerns that I think we were all quite taken aback with was that the land would be managed, the internal green space on the estates, and there's quite a lot of it, would be managed by a management company, which homeowners would have to pay a management fee to. And I'm unaware of that happening anywhere else in Farringdon.
That's quite normal for all estates, particularly those with play areas, they have to do that.
Have we got that in Farringdon?
I'm sure we have, because sometimes these things are delegated to the district council or town council to do, for instance, mowing for Burna's Way, that's done by the district council. But I think with Fernham Fields and Steeds, I think there must be the similar arrangement down there. But normally, they are delegated to a management company. And my only concern is that some of these management companies start off with a very low fee then start jacking it up each year. It's a bit like Leashold. And there needs to be some control over that. Looking at it, I think we object, it probably carries more weight and that they'll do it. I don't want to be object to be negative, but it does actually perhaps focus the attention that, you know, we have got these concerns. And we object until the concerns are dealt with. It happened before, didn't we? And we withdrew an objection.
And I think in light that Little, Great Coxwell have objected as well. They've supported us on objections.
Yeah.
Yeah, Great Coxwell has objected. And then we, you know, it can be word in a way that if these conditions are met, listed in the points as have been listed, you know, then they will be supported. There was a point that Kira made at the conversation we had yesterday with the developer, which was about the housing design not being respected, the Farringdon Neighbour Plan principle of inserting sort of a pane on the roof. You know, we've been talking with Jo about green roof. She was a very good point. But none of this seemed to be at the moment included by the developer, because they're going for, because of cost reason. And that's not really the town council concern, is we want new houses to be, you want new houses to be built to the maximum standard, the highest standard possible. So these are points that should be really put forward, because they are in the Farringdon Neighbour Plan. But yes, also there is Jane who would like to say something, sorry.
That's all right. Our meeting yesterday, I thought it'd be a good idea to look at the site, because I hadn't really taken that much notice of it. I tried Google Maps, but all satellite, I can only see it from the top. Street view, all I see is the hedge. And of course, I can't go out and have a look at it properly. So I don't know what to vote on this, because I don't actually know what I'm looking at, to be quite honest. So I have to go, because here it lives next to the site. I would probably go with whatever Kira's decision is.
Yeah, I mean, thank you, Jane. I agree with some of the points that the developer made in defence of some of my comments. I would dispute that it's not a very steep hill, having walked up it several times. And it is as high, actually, as high as the folly hill. When you stand on top of that hill, you are, you know, they've done the measurements, it is as high as the folly. So it is a very important viewpoint for Farringdon. And now the fact that they're not actually putting anything on the peak of that hill is quite an interesting development. And that still seems to be quite vague about what will happen at the top of there. One of my concerns is the pavements, the footpaths that are supposed to interconnect and aren't really going anywhere, those are really steep. And they might look fine on a map, but I would dispute that you'd ever be able to cycle down one of those paths, because it's, you know, it's literally really steep. So I think there are some teething things that would need to be bottomed out. And my fear is if we don't object, those things will get pushed under the carpet and not as visible. And the fact that Great Coxwell have objected, I still think we should object.
And can I also make you aware of the fact that the urban design officer has also commented on that, wanting to see more of the connection, which I think you'll be quite glad to hear. They want to see more the connection with the current existing development, current existing residential houses. They can see as being proposed, as being mentioned, but they want to see more of that, how this will be connecting to the rest of their current house, existing houses. Yeah.
I mean, it does feel that our neighbourhood plan has just been, you know, disregarded.
Mike, Stephen has his hand up.
Stephen?
Yeah, thanks, Mike. I think it's a mark of how bad things are that we're celebrating the fact that developers engaging on a reasonable listening basis with us. I think that's quite instructive. I mean, I'm still inclined to object to this. And one of the things that I haven't heard any assurances about is that they're taking our sustainability, green and environmental concerns seriously. Because as everybody involved in this knows, we declared a climate emergency and we've done some good work in that. But this is the answer to, how do you manifest that? How does that policy become real? And the answer is, you push developers to respect what they ought to do in terms of sustainability and protecting the environment and building something that isn't going to just be a negative factor in our carbon output and all the rest of it. So I'm still kind of inclined to object. And of course, they're not going to take it seriously if we don't object. So I think with Great Coxwell, I think that's, you know, that gives us a little bit of weight to try and squeeze them a bit further at the very least. So I think we should still object.
Yeah, thank you, Stephen. I think that's very well said. I think if anybody hasn't seen the Great Coxwell report, it's well worth reading, it's very well written. And we should endorse that. And also, I think we should endorse Judith's comments. So can we, anybody make any other points? I think we were going to recommend that we object, but as taken to Marcia's point, that they've got to deal with these points and to perhaps hold their noses to the grindstone. Okay, can we vote on that?
I'm trying, it keeps moving.
So that's carried, Mike?
Sorry.
Object, object has been carried.
Yeah, I've just jumped, sorry.
It's very jumpy, isn't it?
We've got 77% object, 20% strongly object, okay. And one abstention, that's presumably Bethia. Okay, thank you very much. We now move on to the thorny one back again of Rorden Way. I don't know if you've had a chance to look at this, but I've just got it up on the planning portal. And there are, every neighbour who's on the list has objected. And that's one, two, three, four, five, six. Oh, sorry, one hasn't responded. Seven people corresponded, six have objected very strongly. It seems like it's just a resubmission of the same thing. And the argument being made by the householders, it's on the householders' land. And there's no objection from the highways liaison officer. I can't see any change in this, so I don't know what anybody else thinks.
Oh, Rosalinda would like to speak.
According to the minutes, sorry, to the agenda, we've missed out number two, which was a gem and fitness.
Yes, I think it's been up recently, yeah.
Sorry, I'm looking at the list of planning applications.
Yeah, number two, the list of planning applications, number two, is the one in Harding Close.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
This is the most recent, Mike, sorry. I would say just that, yeah, the next one.
Harding, sorry, let's go back to Harding Close.
I've done the poll for the wall, Mike, so could we just do it sliding out of order and go back again?
Sorry about that. Shall we look at Rorden Way? I don't know what people think about this one, because it seems very similar to where we were before.
I think we can't ignore that everybody's comment. If every householder that joins the property has objected, surely we have to take that into consideration.
And everybody's under real material considerations there about loss of view and subsidence and things like that. You know, we don't know the details on this one, but I always get the feeling that we ought to be supporting householders adjacent to developments like this. We didn't like it before.
Well, the objection, the consideration made by the planning office at the time still stay are the same for this application. Nothing has changed. So the change of appearance of the wall is still not going to solve the issue of the path being reduced by the extension of the wall. They are referring to the wall needing to be modified, because it's been damaged. And but that doesn't entail that the wall needs to stand as well. It can be remounted and stays where it is. So the objection can be the same as before.
I don't think there's enough difference to warrant changing our original opinion of objection.
Do you want to vote on this? Can we vote on that one, please?
So an objection is carried, Mike.
Thank you. So, sorry, but back to the Harding Way one. I don't know if you've all looked at this, but what they want to do is to build an extension over a garage. And on Harding Way, the houses are separated by the garages, which are joined together. So the roofline changes so. And it seems to me that they're actually going to change the roofline considerably, which was picked up by a neighbour across the road. I think as far as the extension itself, it's perhaps nothing to object to there, but it's actually the appearance of the extension with their intention, but it just changed the roofline considerably.
Mike, if I may say something about, there are actually two policies that have been challenged by this planning application. We had a very similar application not too long ago. And it will challenge actual design guide SPD 2015, the principle DG104, which is about neighbours' privacy, and the neighbours' officer commented on this. And also, it will challenge another principle, always of the housing design guide, because it would have an impact on the street scene. With the extension of this garage, it would actually have this terrace in effect. And so there are actually two policies, so.
Yes. What do councillors think on this one?
I have very mixed views, because when the estates are built, they're designed to be as they are. And the odd porch addition or, you know, extension at the back of a conservatory or that kind of thing, doesn't change the status of the estate. But when you start building and changing rooflines and continuity changes, and I just think it's tricky, you know, if everybody in that street does exactly the same, that'll be quite a different feel. And I know that isn't a reason to object, but it is in terms of character.
It is, if it does change the roofline.
If it changes the roofline, by saying, what if everybody does it, isn't it?
Obviously, issues of particle, it's actually changing the layout completely. And I think would Nextdoor actually lose any light as a result of this? I think if the, you know, if the extension had been round the back or somewhere else, I don't think there'd be any problems. But the fact it's actually changing considerably Nextdoor as well with the adjoining garage, I'd worry about it.
Jane would like to speak.
Yes, I know what Marcia's talking about. It was a recent one, wasn't it? About four months ago?
Yes, yes, exactly, yeah.
Yeah, same thing, we objected then, because it changed the ambience of the whole street scene. That's it.
I think that was on Orchard Hill, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mate, not, if you get one of the trees down there, wasn't it?
And we've had objections from neighbours have objected, haven't they?
Yes.
Yes, I mean, very vociferously as well.
I think we have to listen to what people say. It's going to affect them. And it's, you know, not in line with the policies.
I think we have to do it on the grounds of neighbours objecting.
I agree.
Okay.
I agree to object.
I can't remember if I voted yet, I can't see.
No, you haven't, Mike.
Okay.
So that's carried, an objection is carried.
Yes, we've got object and strongly object. Thank you very much for that. And the final one is Rogers Concrete. I don't know where to start on this one.
Where to start, yeah.
I hope people saw my message. I'm very sorry that it went on at great length. But it's something about which I feel very strongly, because this is the last undeveloped allocated site in the local plan and in the neighbourhood plan. And I did attach the history of this site. When people came to see us, about 2008, I think it was from Rogers Concrete, the developers there were most, were insistent that this would not be a housing development, because it was a most unsuitable site for housing, right next to the A420 with the quarry wall behind it. And it was going to be proposed for commercial development. Then the Sands Hill Consortium was formed, which was between Bloor Home, Bray's Notes College, the Alan Stephens, the Joan Wilde Trust and Rogers Concrete. And the planning application was put in 2013 for the whole estate, which was going to be 380 houses with commercial property on Rogers Concrete. This was approved by the planning committee on the Vale, but it was never given a decision notice. And then it was resubmitted in, I think, 2017, purely for the first three without the Rogers Concrete. The Rogers Concrete was taken out. So obviously, someone had realised that perhaps Rogers Concrete was going to be a problem. And we know that when the landowners came to see us at the end of 2019, they hadn't real, well, I don't know if they'd realised, but there is an obligation to restore the quarry. And this is going to cost them money. And therefore, to, they admitted that to pay for this, they're going to have to put houses on it, because commer- because commercial property wouldn't be viable. Now, there's a design and access statement, which I think is full of flaws. In fact, even the planning application's got a flaw in it, because it says on section thirteen, they're asking if there's any geological reasons within, considerations within the proximity of your site. And they say no, well, of course, it's next to a triple SI, and they even admit there's one five metres away, so that seems to be an omission. But the design and access statement seems to be flawed. The way the houses are laid out, they acknowledge that it's very noisy, therefore they want to put the cheaper housing as a sound barrier. This is reminiscent of Fernham Fields, where they wanted to put the old people's home right along the A420 as a sound barrier. It's the cul-de-sac to Endor cul-de-sacs, of course, but it's still allocated for employment in the local plan. And I think the local plan ought to be upheld, as should the neighbourhood plan. There is then a long employment survey, well, an investigation into whether the site is commercially viable. And it seems to be flawed, because they start off trying to say that the National Planning Policy Framework says that most town centre employment is offices. This site is town centre, therefore it ought to be offices, but it's not very suitable for offices, well, we know that. And then they say, well, it's remote, therefore it wouldn't be very suitable. And of course, it's right next to the A420, so it's not really marketable for offices. But of course, when we look at the census for 2011, office and administration employment is less significant in Farringdon than the rest of the Vale. In fact, they admit in the employment land survey that the industrial estate really has a shortage of the type of property for commercial development, which is B2 as opposed to B1, which is offices, which I think, you know, perhaps shoots themselves in the foot. So then they admit that it's really not a very suitable site for commercial property because of its proximity to the A420 and the noise, and it really wouldn't be attractive for development. Well, to me, that would say, well, if it's not very attractive for commercial property, surely it's not very attractive for housing. Personally, I would object in the strongest possible terms to this development, but I'd like to hear your comments.
I agree, Mike, I think you've written a very comprehensive assessment, really. I looked at it and didn't know where to start, there were so many anomalies with what they were saying. It just beggars belief that, you wonder if they actually have read it, as a document on its own. And I think we absolutely need to object on the reasons that you've said.
Thank you.
Sorry, Stephen and then Jane would like to comment.
Thanks, Marcia. I mean, there's a couple of things, Mike, I read that, and I thought it was a very well-written and argued position paper. I mean, there's a couple of things, I mean, obviously there's a new regime at the Vale, which I think would take a slightly different view on the planning issue. As you pointed out, they've done a 180-degree turn on a number of the, you know, argued that black is white and white is black, you know, because, for example, it's suitability for office or residential development, that's not a that's not a thing you can just change, it's either, it's a binary equation, it's either one or the other. And some of those arguments wouldn't hold up to a strong gust of wind, never mind a proper reasoned objection. But I think the key point is, we're not going ever to reverse Farringdon becoming a dormitory town unless we stick to the neighbourhood plan and the allocation for land that it's used for. So I think on that basis, we should strongly object to it.
Thank you, Stephen, and I think with the current situation, I think, isn't it reinforcing that the more that people can work locally, the better to reduce commuting? Thank you, Steve.
Couldn't agree more.
Jane's got her hand up.
Yeah, Jane.
Yeah, when in, you're right, I think it was about 2008, all three of the owners separately turned, rolled up to the town council and said they wanted to develop their bits of land, we told them to talk to each other, which they did. They rolled it all together, what they've done is offload Rogers Concrete, because it's uneconomical. My comment at the time in one of those meetings was to have a house there would be like being a hobbit stuck under a cliff, it's ridiculous. It's also on the floor of the quarry, so how they deal with the drainage would be difficult. Any houses there with gardens would probably have about six inches of topsoil stuck on the top. They won't be able to grow anything, no, you can't put houses there, it's ridiculous. Sorry, that's just my comment.
Thank you, Jane, I mean, I made this comment way back on the neighbourhood plan in the evidence-based review, because the geologist said to me that half of Rogers Concrete had been mined down to the limestone pavement.
Yeah, yeah, it has.
And it would be impossible to drain. And then they picked this up and said, well, the site's four hectares, so we said two hectares would be unusable. And this was really trying to advise the district council that of their three hectares of allocated land, only perhaps one hectare was viable. Of course, they then said, well, in their argument in the design access statement is that, oh, of course, if only one hectare is available, then surely we were going to allocate more employment sites on the Bloor Home site, no, I don't think we ever said that. So they were trying to say that there was none, you know, they were implying that if this wasn't suitable, the employment would have to go on the Bloor Home site, which is not true at all. I presume what, you know, what Jane said is that in part of the restoration, they're going to have to dump a lot of topsoil on, and that's where the drainage will go. But it'd be interesting to see how it progresses, if that were the case.
If topsoil they'll put on there will be minimal. Mike, you've got gardens, how far down do you dig to get your, I don't know, plants in?
Well, I go down. Foot.
It's usually cut in spits, which is, most people, is one spit with good soil that's been gardened for years, and two spits if you want to put potatoes in, which is too big. You won't get that on that land, it's ridiculous.
Oh, poor trees, Jane.
Rubbish.
Yeah.
If there's houses with gardens there.
Yes, well, you certainly couldn't plant trees there, could you? Because you'd have to go quite deep to get a, you know, a decent tree in. It's getting late, folks, what are we going to do on this? I mean, my view would be strongly object.
I think a lot of people have voted, Mike, we've got
I don't think I've voted.
Seven total at the moment objecting.
Jumped around again.
Strongly object, yeah.
Strongly object.
Okay. Marcia, it's going to be difficult to word this, I know you've had a go at this, but I think we need to get these points across to them, particularly quoting them, quoting the district council, their own local plan, you know, I actually did quote them from the local plan to say, this is what you actually said about it, about supporting economic prosperity for Farringdon.
Yes, and there was a good point as well made, to make actually, looking at again the local plan, there is a good point about making sure that affordable housing are not put on the corner along the side of the A420, which is exactly what they're proposing to do. So there are actually, yeah, and I'm sure there is a lot more to study in this application, but I will definitely, I'll have a good, yeah, work session, I'll draft a response and I'll circulate it, and then I can, we have plenty of time for this run, until end of May, 22nd of May, actually, yeah.
And I think we perhaps have to bear in mind the point that Stephen made, which we do have a different regime at the district council now, and perhaps they will be a little bit more mindful of our neighbourhood plan and our opinions as a town council.
Well, we did lose the HCA site, of course, on Volunteer Way, so that was the only other allocated site apart from the A420.
Yeah.
Which is, and I said it's ironic that the two sites which the local plan discounted as not being suitable are the ones that are actually being developed for commercial property, so what do we know? Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, I think that will draw the proceedings to a conclusion.
Thank you very much, Mike, good job.
Thank you all.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Mike, cheers.
Well, I close the meeting.